If everyone would please take a seat, we will get started. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to all the candidates who have come here today. Welcome to the PTA Council of Howard County's Board of Education Candidate Forum. I am Teri Marcus, I am the President of PTA and your host and moderator for this event. PTA has hosted many forums in the past. Each of these has been reported and posted on PTA's YouTube site. This forum will likewise be recorded and will be available to watch on YouTube. In a couple of days, people can search for the video directly on YouTube or visit PTA's website to find the link to the video at www.ptachc.org. Our last Board of Education Candidate Forum in 2022 has received over 1,000 views. The mission of PTAs at all levels, national, state, county, councils, and local schools, is to advocate for all children. PTA is a county-wide, volunteer, nonpartisan, nonprofit charitable organization. We are not part of the school system, but we work with our school system to help make it the best it can be for all of our students. As a nonpartisan group, this forum is being conducted in accordance with national PTA standards for remaining nonpartisan. All 12 candidates were invited to attend today's forum and participate equally. We are missing three of them here today. PTA has solicited questions from our members over the past few weeks. To the extent questions may express a viewpoint, that viewpoint is only that of the questioner and does not reflect an official position of PTA unless otherwise noted. Now some instructions for the candidates. We will start by giving each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves and give opening remarks. Then we will move into the question and answer session. Questions will be presented in a rapid-fire format. This means that each candidate will be given their own questions and two minutes to answer the question as opposed to all candidates answering the same question. If a candidate does not need the full two minutes to answer the question, they may use their remaining time to answer a question asked of another candidate if they would like to. There is no requirement to use the full two minutes if it is not needed. Once these questions are completed, we will move on to questions of the audience members present here today. Now some instructions for our audience. Please write down any questions you may have and hand them to one of our board members who will be coming around to collect them. Angela and Karina there. Questions should be general in nature. They should be something that any candidate could answer and should not pertain to any particular student or personal situation. It appears extremely likely that we will not have time in the approximately 90 minutes allotted for this forum to ask and answer all the questions. As a result, we will compile a master list of all the questions received and email them to the candidates to provide their written responses. Those responses will be posted to our website. That way, all the candidates will have the same opportunity to answer all the questions, and the candidates who cannot be here today will have the opportunity to respond as well. Lastly, just a reminder that this forum is designed to be mutually beneficial. Audience members... Audience members can learn about the candidates and candidates can learn about some of the concerns and priorities of our members. Everyone should maintain the highest standards of civility and graciousness during this event. Everyone here is volunteering their time for the purpose of bettering the lives of our students. If candidates or audience members want to speak informally after the event, they are welcome to use the room until 3:00 PM. There's no requirement to do so. Now we can begin. We have another role. If the candidates could stand when answering the question, that would be helpful. Thank you. Just a quick... We're going to start off with just a quick show of hands to all the candidates. Are you a current PTA member or have you been a PTA member in the past? All right, very nice. Thank you. And have you ever had a PTA leadership role before?
I was a representative, so...
Back yes. All right, we are going to start with our first round of questions that we have taken from our members. Oh, yes, sorry. This is my first time doing this as well. So we will go ahead and do introductions, starting with candidate one, Mr. Gao.
Good afternoon. My name is Andre Gao. As you just complained, my sign says Dr. Andre Gao. So I received a PhD from Duke University, and I have been working in the science and the finance industry for over the last 30 years. And I have been in the Howard County residence for the last 24 years. I have three children. All of them attended Howard County Public Schools. The reason I moved to Howard County is because of the well-known school system, and I think many of the family here, they come for the same reason. So I know that the school system is very important to my family and to every family here, to every parent. So that people often ask me, why do I run for BOE? Because my last... the youngest children is graduating this year. But I... because I know the importance of the education to every family, and I have many friends, neighbors, they still have young children in school, and they have issues and concern about the public school system. So I'm willing to help by running for BOE. I know that they need somebody in BOE to advocate them to help resolve this problem and issues. So that's my motivation to run. And I am come here to speak and offer you and hope you all support my candidacy. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Praveen Panuri, and I'm also running for District One. I relocated from India to the U.S. and to Howard County in 1996. Both my kids went through the school system here, then they graduated from University of Madeland. My daughter is getting ready to go to dental school this summer. Very proud of her. My son, the older son, he graduated from Madeland and then University of Madeland, and he now works for Nike Europe, and he has moved to Netherlands. So I basically have a very good idea of how the education system works in three different countries at a minimum. I know how things work in India, how I know how things work in Netherlands, and obviously because my kids are from here, I know how things work here. The reason I'm running is because we all believe that education is the greatest equalizer. We know two things about that, and that's why we all go on this school system. My reason I'm running is because every year, whenever there's a budget going on, there's a lot of anxiety in this community. I mean, it's nothing new. Some years, there is more anxiety in the community than others. This year was particularly flat, but for the past 25 years that I've been with the school system, I always see some anxiety in the community. And that's something I want to change. And for that, we need some systemic changes in the whole way we operate. Now, we got to do bottom-up budgeting, which means that we start looking at every expense flow we are selling to really need. Just because we had it like last year, we really need it now. So that's something we need to do. And also want to do multi-year budgeting. We are not going to go out of business next year. So why do we plan only for one year? Let's plan for three years, five years, just like we do in the capital budgeting, just like we do in the federal government. That gives us more time to kind of respond to any changes, you know, and that kind of decompensates anxiety. And there are a couple of things which I want to do, like we need to have a high school in Anchorage. My time is up, but I do want to talk about that in a little more detail.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here today. My name is Meg Ritz. I am running District One, and I want to share a little bit about why I'm running. I have been an advocate for many years, almost a decade and a half for education in Howard County. Why did I do that? Not because I have 10 kids or something. I only have three, and they... one is already graduated, but I still have a sixth grader. But I grew up in Chicago on South Side, and I grew up in a family that really struggled to make ends meet, and I benefited from programs like Freedom of Rights Meals. And I benefited from a lot of generous and amazing and wonderful people, including my teachers. And so education, especially public education, is so important to me. And I knew that when I was able to, I needed to be able to help other people. So that was my motivation, and that keeps me coming back. So when I did have kids in school, I went to the PTA meeting, and my very first PTA meeting ended up with a role on the PTA. And then I stuck around because what I learned was our school was overcrowded. And I grew up in a school, went to school in an elementary school, K-8, that was extremely overcrowded and very old, built in the 1920s, and very high rates of car rates. So I know that that is not the environment that we want parents to live in. So I kept sticking around. I got involved at the county level. I got involved testifying for the board. Then I had to come to council, got to know what was going on. I've been serving on policy review committees of the board. I'm serving currently on the operating budget review committee. I'm one of the co-chairs this year. And I also work at East Columbia Preschool as a teacher's assistant. So I have a lot of knowledge and experience in early childhood education, which is going to become a big issue with the Blueprint and our new mandates for early childhood education. And I'm running today because I believe I can get the ground running right away. Thank you.
I'm just going to step closer to Meg, so the court will reach. I'm Antonia Watts. I am in District Two right now and serving on District Two's... on the board of education for District Two right now. I live in Elbridge. I have two kids that go to Howard County Public Schools. They're both in elementary. I have a fourth grader and a first grader. I became involved in school when my son, my oldest, was three. So he was a peer in the Empresson Toddlers Program, which is a program that helps our youngest learners with access to the education they need. So he was a typical peer, and that's when I started going to the PTA meetings. And I always try to tell parents, PTA is for everyone in the community, not necessarily just that you have a kid in the school system. So my... a little bit about my background is I am an engineer by training. So I was... worked doing crisis safety testing for Toyota Technical Center for about five years, and then while I was doing it, I was really interested in education. I was volunteering for the NWA CP as the Director of their tutoring program. And so I really saw, like, right there, the transformative power of education. We would take students that were struggling in school. We would teach them, because it's always math, right? We're always struggling with math, and be able to tutor them and then help them succeed. And I thought, you know what? I could do a list for a living. I quit my job as an engineer, went back to school, and became a seventh-grade math teacher. And I always like to tell people, I need to take two more math classes to become a seventh grade math teacher than what I had as an engineer. So your teachers are very well-prepared and very well-trained. And so I took some time off to help raise my kids, and some of the people thought about running for an event, and I was like, oh, absolutely not. No, I have not. And then they were like, well, you have to think about it. And I thought about it, and where I have the background, I have the engineering, the data, and the ability to analyze data, I have the educational background, I've worked as a classroom teacher, which is not a lot... not many people can say that. Was that two minutes? I'm going to do that. It felt very fast. Was that two minutes? Whoa, okay. So I will wrap up the rest of the things I have to say as we get through the rest of the questions. Thank you, people.
Good afternoon, everybody. Hori Kanbu. I am an Airtrain American. I've been in the U.S. for a little over about 24 years or so. I'm running for the Board of Education to advocate for a truly inclusive school system. I have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, and I am deeply concerned that when they enter the school system, that their identity will not be celebrated the same way that other identities will be celebrated. And so I want to advocate for that. I also want to advocate for a school system where any child, regardless of their socioeconomic background, would achieve their highest potential. And I want a school system where every school is capable of delivering that. We are one of the wealthiest counties in the country, and so why do we have trouble doing that? I have been advocating on zoning and land use decisions for the past few years, and 80% to 90% of what happens to us on a daily basis is due to zoning and land use decisions. Poor zoning and land use decisions have adverse impacts on the budget, which leads to adverse impacts on the school budget, which leads to some of the things that we're dealing with in terms of the spiraling level of service in our school system. So if elected, I will advocate to ensure that our schools are fully funded as a board member. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jen Halli. I am currently on the Board of Education. I am in my second term, and I am the only board member in my second term, so at five and a half years, I am the longest-standing board member, which is a little scary that we don't have a lot of institutional history or knowledge. But what I bring to the board and to our community is I have a bachelor's in economics and East Asian studies, and master's in East Asian studies, so very cross-cultural. I have been a PTA resident. I have run a preschool. I have been a PTA secretary. I have written cultural arts grants and more for our PTAs and for our schools. My three children graduated from HCPSS. They went to Swansfield, a Title I school. They went to Park Choice and Quail. And they are all three of them successful adults, and I attribute a lot of that success to the Howard County Public School System. And my youngest is actually in college studying to become a teacher. So education is dear and dear to our family. Prior to being on the board, I was a 20-year education advocate, and my background is kind of unique in that regard, that I had done the three main things that the Board of Education does, budgeting, as well as policy, and taking a position on legislation and advocating for. And I had all of that experience prior to coming to the board and could translate it directly into working for our students on day one. And I'd like to continue to do that, because we do have some problems, and we have made some mistakes in recent years, and we have things to fix. We have accountability and transparency that need to be increased. And I believe that I have begun that process as board chair and want to continue. So I look for your vote. And I get it from Jen now.
My name is Kat Carter. I'm a school board candidate for District Five. 15 years ago, I moved to Howard County because of the schools. People say that certain schools and districts don't deserve the same education as others. People say there isn't many working poor in District Five. That is not true. I know because I was one of the working poor in District Five. My oldest, Atticus, my little son, Atticus, turned five, and I wanted to make sure he went to a good school that prepared him for the workforce, and it did. I had to struggle to support my family of five with one on the way, and with on the same total household income as a starting teacher, with a mortgage and all the extra taxes that Howard County has. I did this for the schools. We moved into a house that required a lot of essential repairs, structural issues, no heating in the middle of winter, with mold and no drinkable water. We did it for our kids to be in the best schools. There is working poor in every school and every district who are sacrificing to live in Howard County because of the schools. The Board of Education has forgotten our kids and our struggles and is making decisions we can't afford, even the county executive agrees and is left to report. The school board is not making decisions on our school renovations that are data-driven. This week, my school couldn't even afford to print the warrants and certificates for the student athletes, to their disappointment, a sign of the fiscal state we are in. In addition, the county has forgotten our kids and owes them money for our schools. The school... the school board should be asking the county for more money, not less. The county household executives should cut back on all their overspending and projects like the new $71 million home school center and the $143 million library, and fund our schools at historical norms of 58%. People came to Howard County because of the schools. For years, our budget has not been reflecting that schools are the investment that is paid on for them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ian R. Shibley. I went to Howard County Schools, graduated from Howard County High Schools. I went on to law school. I'm an attorney, and I'm a teacher. I worked for a public health agency and a regulated industry for the last 34 years. When I left FBA, I was in charge of the compliance and enforcement policies for all regulated commodities, that includes food, drugs, devices, vaccines, blood products, self-care, everything, and from cradle to grave. So when they went to animals, when they were investigating people, when they went to the manufacturing floor, and when they went in the delivery truck, and when those detailed people told the doctor, those off-label uses about how great OxyContin was, we regulated all those things. So that gave me decades of experience with reviewing policies and procedures, making sure there's a feedback loop for how they work with the people on the ground, and then to go back and check and make sure they did what we intended. So with that background, I'm so... I'm giddy to be a Teacher's Choice candidate in District Five. During this time, I also volunteered for the American Field Service Exchange Program. So I prepared students here to go abroad for a study, a year of study abroad, and welcomed students coming here as their liaison and as a host mom. Well, my life turned upside down until 2018, 2018, when a mass shooter killed my husband and four of his coworkers, Leon Apple's capital. So I turned my advocacy into public safety. I'm thinking of those exchange students who've come over here, who can't promise their parents that they'll come home at night safely. And so I turned my expertise to safety in schools as well. Gun violence isn't the only preventable issue facing our case today. The bathroom back there is overflowing as we speak. Swansfield has radon. Our students are facing safety issues every day, and I'm here to be their champion. Thank you for your vote.
Good afternoon. My name is Trent Piddlin, and I'm a candidate in District Five. My resume is lengthy, and I draw your attention to my website, where you will learn more about me than you ever would care to know. What most people ask me first when they want to know is, why are you running? I am running for school board because I'm passionate about education. My last eight years in the House of Delegates brought me face-to-face with the realities of the system of education in the state of Maryland, and it was not... it was not something that I... that was pleasant. And I'm running because I have five grandchildren in five different schools in the Howard County school system. I also am running because, I don't know if you've noticed, but the state is slowly taking over, making decisions for the counties. The requirements of the Blueprint are one example. And when you apply a one-size-fits-all to all the school systems, Howard County is going to lose. I think the school board needs someone who has experience, knowledge, and leadership ability, someone who can read contracts. I am also a lawyer. And someone who knows how to ask questions of staff that might be able to bring up information that you need to know to make decisions. There have been too many avoidable problems in our school system recently. Students should be bused to school, not made to walk for two miles, and they should arrive there safely and on time. Deferring maintenance is not an option. No kid should go to school in a school with mild mold, dew, mice, and worse, and bad air quality, and not enough bathrooms. That's got to stop. And finally, our failure to adequately educate our special education students is simply wrong, and we need to remedy that, and I hope that I will have the opportunity to help do that.
Thank you so much, everyone. Now we will start with our questions and answers. And just a reminder, everybody will have two minutes to answer. Mr. Gao, to start, you as candidate one. Your question is, have you testified on any topic impacting HCPSS? If so, when did you testify, and what was the topic?
Well, I testified about seven years ago with this redistricting. That is, I think at that time, we testified in a widely high school. Because those redistricting processes was not transparent, and so also irrational, it's cut out that lobbying neighborhood into half. So that I testified with all the other people from the community, and fortunately, that redistricted didn't happen to cut out labor board. Honestly, I also testified just a couple weeks ago at...
I think our time is out. Mary?
That's perfect.
Okay. What decisions of the current Board of Education have you agreed with, if any?
I mean, there are a lot of smart people in the Board of Education, and there are a lot of smart people in the school system. What decisions I did agree with? That's a very short list, but there's a longer list on things which I did not agree with them. For example, they moved Dunlog in Middle School, from the Capitol improvement plant down to the... Same thing happened with Sentinel High Schools. They moved it down. So they're basically differing the maintenance as required, not based on the requirements, but based on political things. So I kind of did kind of like that there. Couple of the members did vote in favor of that, but knocked out. That's something I didn't like. And also during the budgeting season, I did not see any questions being asked on why. Everybody was playing Hunger Games at the budgeting system, saying, don't cut this, don't cut that, or no, we need this, we need that, and I completely agree, we all need that. So it has become more of a Hunger Games thing. So I wanted the Board of Education to kind of delve deeper and say, like, why? Why are we spending so much money on this thing? Do we really need that money? And we didn't see as many whys coming out as I wanted to see. One thing I do agree with them is they have worked a lot more on the equity in terms of giving a school day off or a... giving a holiday for Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and E, and Diwali, and Chinese, and then Lunar Eve. So that's something which I kind of agree with them. I agree with them when they fired Rafa Fuze. It's been a while. I completely agree with them. And I completely agree with them when they hired the superintendent, because compared to what we had, he was awesome. But things change, and I truly see that. So yeah.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ritz, sort of the same question now. What decisions of the current Board of Education have you disagreed with, if any?
All right. Well, one that really comes to mind, I was really disappointed that they did not approve the ability to have our... in lieu of a snow day, like a full snow... in lieu of a snow day, like a full snow day, have asynchronous instruction. We could have been ending school on time this year. And I don't think that was an equity issue because there was a long period of times students would have to make up those assignments. And we really want to see school happening during the school year, not in June. It's not as helpful, but that was a disappointment. On things that I didn't agree on, share one of those. I don't want to get into too many really old things, but you know, there were lots of old things that were issues, and I don't blame the work with the Zoom contract because they weren't given enough time to look at it, to read it. They shouldn't be presented things and then said, "Vote today." That's ridiculous. But one thing that I am glad that they agreed this year is trying to move some of the difficult decisions with the budget at the beginning of the process rather than at the end, so it's not blindsiding everybody in May. I think there's been a lot more opportunity for people to give meaningful feedback to the board this year on the budget. They had, I think, four sessions. Usually at this time of year, there is one and maybe one or two people that come. And I think people have a lot more idea of what's happening with the budget and its process, and that it continues all the way through May. I think that's about all I want to say. I might point more something, but thank you guys.
Okay, Ms. Potts. How would you work with the county executive and the county council to increase or ensure adequate funding for the school system?
So I can speak to one of the things I have done and what I need to do is really advocating for things that could be used for one-time funding. There are a lot of things in the budget, in the operating budget, that are reoccurrence. They happen year-over-year. And there are things like, for example, potentially changing the Chromebook model usage so that we can shift that out of the operating budget and into one-time funding. So the one-time funding means we use right funding, we can use special funding to really attack those items, and so we're not putting those in the operating budget. So I've worked a lot with county executives' team and county household members to say like, "Let's look at our budget, think about things that we could use utilizing funding for." I've talked to them about, you know, all the issues that come up that maybe they have a handle on. So for example, there is, our healthcare one is becoming, you know, it's fully increasing as we have, as healthcare costs rise, and really looking at, is that something else that maybe the county can add soon? Or just looking at the shift, things that, we have a lot of services that our children need, rightly so, psychological services, nursing services, and give other things that the county can also take on. So I think there's basically more of a shared burden and shared responsibility when it comes to the school system that I don't think the county has really taken on their fair share of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What parts of the blueprint do you think are good for HCPSS?
I think in, really the entire aspect of the blueprint plan is good. The challenge is the implementation. I think expanding early education, getting schoolchildren career-ready, all those things are very important. As we have seen though, in this budget season, the fact that we have, we're dealing with rolling out these early programs in the blueprint have been used as an excuse to reduce the budget. So I think we should embrace it. We should encourage the county, where the county administration, where the money is, to set aside the funding that we need and implement it. People come to Howard County for the schools. It's the economic engine of the school system. So coming up, you know, rolling out, expanding pre-K is important. There are a lot of new families with schoolchildren who perhaps don't have the means to send, you know, to have their kids in pre-K. And so that's very important. Getting kids' career-ready in the new age of automation is important. A lot, I think, seven to eight percent of the jobs that will be, that will exist in the next few years, they're not here now, and so we have to get, you know, we have to be ready for that, so.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Mallon. What parts of the blueprint do you think may have a negative impact on HCPSS, if any?
The number one thing that I think will have a negative impact is that right now, we don't have funding streams that have changed enough to really implement the blueprint with fidelity in the timeline that they've given us. So since Howard County has been a historically wealthy county, we are already above their minimum levels for maintenance of effort. And the other thing that is, which I'm going to pivot and say, early time education, it's supposed to be a public private partnership with fifty percent of our pre-K students receiving services to be in the private industry. And the amount of money that the state is willing to give those preschools to do this service for our community is insufficient. Right now, it's around thirteen thousand dollars a year, and yet our preschools are requiring to be Excel's accredited, which is something else required by the blueprint, in a cost of about twenty thousand a year. So they are losing money to buy into this. So that means that Howard County schools aren't able to meet some of those baseline requirements. Another thing that I think isn't good right now, and it will be okay in the long run, is that we don't get funding as part of our year-over-year maintenance of effort for any pre-K programs where kids are half-day. So anyone enrolled today in a half-day program, they're not counted in our money for next year. They don't count until they're full-day, but we have to convert all of the half-day to full-day. I also don't think that the funding stream is sufficient to build the infrastructure that we need in capital buildings for the hundred-and-twenty prepaid classrooms that we will need as part of HCPSS. A hundred-and-twenty, we're at thirteen at Gulf Ridge.
Yay. All right. You are running for superintendent of District Five this election cycle. What do you think is the biggest need in your district, and what are the biggest needs for each of the other four districts?
Honestly, is this on? Hello? Oh, good, okay. Sorry about that. Honestly, I think the previous question is that, because it's not, it's affecting all the districts. As a member of the education coalition, as an education advocate for the last nine years, I have been following both the current and the blueprint and seeing the impact. And it's going to take a balance between all the levers of government, which I've worked on as an education advocate, who's passed legislation, numerous bills, not only in the state policy, but on a national level, to get this into working order. I do agree that the careers is amazing, my daughter loves her class. The facilities, I agree, for the pre-K are not there, in my mind. They should have actually just gone out in support of the Head Start programs. Like, they should have gone it out slower, so the infrastructure would have been there. I also think that we need talking on the state level, and I actually just did it yesterday, and I already have been talking to state lawmakers because eighty percent of them know me, and they've passed my laws, is the fact that they need to give us a longer timeline and some sort of legislative review. And they need an honest broker. They need someone who they know, who they've worked with, and who are in it for the kids, which I've actually advocated for kids on a national, state, and local level. In fact, this is the high school that in March 2020 I was the project manager for, where we did an outreach program and gave a hundred-and-sixty-eight eye exams in two days to the students in our community, and gave out a hundred-and-seventeen pairs of glasses. I have been fighting for our kids for years, and I want to do another quarter of that now. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Hamlin. Yes, okay. Our Board of Education can make a bid on issues. What will you do to build consensus with board members, even on issues that you may not all agree on?
Oh gosh, thanks for the question, thanks for being here. When I went to law school, I was interested in using the system to solve people's problems. I studied arbitration mediation and counseling. Lots of listening. So lots of listening, lots of figuring out what people's bottom line is, and whether they're wedded to a particular way to get there, or if they will join you, maybe in a new paradox way of getting to your destination and finding your solution to your problem. And maybe it makes you get ninety percent there, but gosh, ninety percent there would mean we could all go home and enjoy our Sunday weekend. So I try to get people to open up and tell me what they want to accomplish and tackle the problem instead of tackling the person. We can tackle these problems together. I also want to go back and talk about the biggest problems in D5. And D5 is really affected by the expanded walk zones, the bus debacle, because we don't have any kind of public transportation or any buses, and houses are far apart in D5. And that was an avoidable problem. I told you a little bit about my background in FDA, looking at policies and procedures, and getting constructive feedback where it wasn't working, and auditing our suppliers. And when your supplier comes to you with some promise, you make them prove they can meet it. You don't just cross your fingers and hope that they're telling you the truth. I mean, unfortunately, contractors don't always tell you the truth. So that bus debacle was avoidable. If we had just held their feet to the fire before they took to the roads instead of after. And that's what we have to do in the FDA-regulated industry, right? You don't want your IV cancer drug to be contaminated. You want to find the problems in advance before you launch. And we didn't do that there, and that was big for D5. Thank you.
Ms. Philbin, what would be your number one goal if I let you to form? Wow, to do a good job, I think would be number one. There are other questions I might answer, and if I think of any more things that are more specific. The board, the decision I approved of was Howard Superintendent, Inter-Supervisor Barnes, and that I disagreed with was not including all third-grade strings and beauty elementary. Probably a real clear about that being a major thing they wanted. I wanted to also say, as far as blueprint, I think one of the best things is the career ladder for teachers, and a lot of teachers are being able to be nationally certified. And as far as the ban, I agree one-hundred percent with everything that Jen Mallon said. BOE Division, how would you approach that, what would you do? I actually have a certificate in executive leadership coaching from Georgetown University, which was a phenomenal course. And then when I was with Mary, I was on a Montgomery County Transportation Policy Task Force Two, which had to come to consensus on transportation issues, which as you might be able to imagine, was not easy. I ended up as one of seven people on a subcommittee called the Consensus to Define Consensus. And then the legislature, dealing with people across the aisle, had a lot of experience doing that. And I hope that those are some of the things that I can bring. And I think maybe the most important thing I hope I can bring is it was very difficult for the board to know that the Zoom contract was going to be banned, and that they didn't have a lot of time to look at it. I wrote one of my newsletters that, that's something that, I don't know if I would have made it any better, but I would have noticed immediately that the Zoom contract was totally announced, with no liquidated damages. And there were others in contrast, the one in San Francisco, which was outstanding. And we didn't use a lot of the things that we should have in that contract.
Thank you. We will return to Mr. Gao with the second question. Recently, the Board of Education has been accused of not being transparent. What will you do to improve transparency?
Yes, I think it's the most important thing to, to every decision, we need to lay out the criteria. And those criteria need to be made public and transparent to everybody, the stakeholders, and to parents and to teachers. So that, those things, the criteria need to be laid out, and then they make, want to know. And the decisions, also the, all the discussion should be transparent as well. I think as a, yeah, one of the things I still worry about is like the contract for the Zoom transportation, the bus transportation. There are people, the parents who ask to look at it, because this is a public information. Still, now the school system or the BOE haven't been able to disclose this. So those are the kind of things I want to support, to say, so every decision-making should be transparent. And the other things about the budget spending or the capital spending for the, for the school renovation, those criteria should also be laid out clearly. And then if somebody makes a mistake, then those mistakes should be addressed, and then should be corrected. Because some of the information or the use, those information is incorrect. And then when people know about it and come back to ask them, they did not say we want to correct it, but they still go on to say, oh, those decisions were made. I think that is not acceptable. Even students make a mistake in the homework, they need to correct it, right?
All right, second question. HCPSS will continue to need to make cuts to make the blueprint's requirements. What would you cut? Or what revenue sources would you need to leverage to avoid making cuts?
Yeah, I don't think we can cut anymore. I mean, whatever we're cutting is going to have very little money back. We do have to look at other revenue sources. And there are other revenue sources that we need to be aware of. For example, right now in Howard County, the transfer tax is one-point-two-five percent. So each time you sell a home, you pay one-point-two-five percent to the county. All of this one-point-two-five percent, twenty-five percent goes to the school system, twenty-five percent goes to the fire department, and the rest of the fifty percent goes to agriculture and parks and lakes and everything else. And a couple of years ago, we had an increase in the fire tax. So right now, the fire department has a kitty of a hundred-and-twenty million dollars that's sitting right there. They for future fire stations that need to come up. Howard County might need five or six more fire stations because we fully developed. It costs about sixteen million dollars to make a fire station. So the fire department might have more money than they need at this point. So we could work with the state to say like, hey, for the next few years, can we have more of this transfer tax coming into the school system? So that's going to give us a little bit of money. The second thing is contribution, the school system contribution, the total budget has come down from fifty-eight percent to fifty percent. We were fifty-eight percent ten years ago, now we are down to fifty percent. So we got to have a relationship with the county council and the county executive to bring that percentage back. Couple of other things, those of us who, all of us who live in Howard County, our home values have gone up by twenty percent, which means that our real estate taxes will go up by twenty percent. And that's going to be a windfall of two-hundred million dollars per year for the county in the next three years, because your property taxes are faced in three years. So three years from now, county will have twenty million dollars more just in property taxes than they have today. So now is our chance to talk to the county and say, "What can we do?" Again, this is all going back to the law of farming and strategic farming. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are you comfortable submitting a budget to the county executive? Are you comfortable submitting a budget to the county executive that would fully fund the school system? Or do you think the budget should reflect the amount of money the school board is told it will likely receive from the county executive and the county council?
All right. I did actually send a letter to the board before, if, on the floor, at this stage. Let me see that, we're not done yet, not done to wait. That I wanted them to ask for more money, because at this point, this is the only chance they get. If they don't ask for things, the county executive can't give them more. The county council can't give them more. County council can only restore what the county executive cuts from what you've asked for. I understand it's a difficult situation, because you don't want to make your funding partner mad at you. You want to persuade them to help you and see how it is beneficial for them and for you if you get the things that we need. So I definitely am going to support asking for their needs and trying also to find some areas, if there are areas, that we can care back that aren't going to impact our teachers and our students. And I also wanted to address that the other questions there were a lot since I last had the mic. I am really excited about that opportunity to help build consensus. This is something that is such a part of my life. I'm part of a bipartisan family. I get the opportunity to defend my ideas and listen to people with different ideas every single day. And I love it. And I love finding the common ground and common solution and identifying how we can move forward. As though we are seat chair, one of them this year, we have a group that is very diverse and has very different ideas about the budget and has had some fractures meetings. And our liaison, he gave me a call before our last meeting and offered to light a candle for me, but you know what, it went super well. It went super well. I ran out of kind of what is our process going to be? We've discussed, we agree upon. And I emphasized, hey, when we have things that we all agree on, that's the thing the board wants to know. And we didn't pass two motions that night, so, thanks.
All right. I want you to prioritize. What schools should be renovated or replaced? What criteria would you use to make these decisions?
So obviously, this has come off the heels of a very contentious capital budget season. I think one of the things that our board is taking in now is really having a work group that we can lay out authority orders that we need and suit to them. So we are where we are today because of previous boards. We didn't just get here overnight. It was a continuous cycle. And I will say, being on the board for the past, like, going on my fourth year, I've seen the decisions that have been made that led us to also this point. So for me, I think there is a fine line that we're walking between maintenance and capacity. And so we are struggling to figure out how to maintain the buildings that are already built, while at the same time, because we are a public school system and because we have to take everybody to walk through the door, finding seats for those kids. We talked about the blueprint is coming online. We also have to have seats for preschoolers now, right, every day. And so I think that's where we are right now, is walking that line. And then also reaching out to our county partners and the state delegation to really start to explore other ideas, like Green, which is private partnership. I can't think of that to be public or private. And so that is really us looking at different ways to build buildings. So in Prince George's County, they build those buildings fast. They build their schools, buildings very quickly. And we have to do something different, because we've done business as usual, which is what got us here. Because we keep doing the exact same thing, expecting a different result. And we're not there now. We have to do something different. We have to look at different funding options to get buildings built. One of the things we also need is a dedicated revenue stream just for maintenance. Because we're at a point now where we, you know, kids can't plan their playgrounds because their playgrounds cut in when they slide off the slide. So like, we have such like, just small to large issues that are maintenance-driven that we need to have a dedicated revenue source to tend to.
Thank you. Okay. What legislation do you support that helps fund HCPSS? And what would you focus on advocating for at the state level that impacts HCPSS?
At the state level, I'm concerned at the efforts to legislate the adequate public facilities ordinance. I think this move to take global control out of our ability to mitigate the impact of residential development on infrastructure is going to be problematic. You know, we want to look at why we are here in terms of dealing with deferred maintenance, in terms of dealing with school capacity issues, the ever-increasing number of school trailers. It has to do with the county's inability to mitigate the increase in residential development. Just in school surcharge fees alone, since 2004 until 2019, the county has moved on about half a billion dollars just in that money alone. There are other fees that the county, road impact fees as well, significant amount of money. And so I would advocate for ensuring that we maintain global control of that or, you know, in terms of that school, our ability to maintain that. In addition, I would also would like to explore the possibility of issuing school bonds. I have concerns about public-private partnerships. We have not used them in Howard County very well. It's led to a hundago in the, you know, at the courthouse project. But I think, you know, a dedicated stream such as a school bond, I think will have the potential to, because it will be within the school's control, I think it has the ability to increase streams for new infrastructure.
All right, thank you. All right. Howard County used to be known for its high academic standards of excellence among all Maryland county schools as well as in national rankings. Howard County's academic rigor has declined precipitously in the last five years. How will you seek to improve Howard County's academic rigor?
That's a really interesting question, and it makes a big assumption that our rigor has gone down. And I don't know that, on the surface, during the pandemic, I would completely agree with you that rigor changed during the pandemic. That being said, given the numbers of students at high school level taking AP courses, taking courses at the community college, taking courses at the home high school that are accredited and given credit for at the community college, we know that rigor still exists. We, my youngest took 13 AP courses. That's crazy rigors. And all of our students have the ability to take challenging level courses. And in fact, many of our schools, the one I'm thinking of that I've heard about in particular is Wild Lake. Wild Lake actually has kind of a step-up program, that they ask every student in high school to take a course a step above where they were previously. And it's to challenge themselves, to increase the rigor for that student. And I also wanted to be known that in fact, we have a very rigorous program kind of at the elementary level, while there have been cuts. There is a mistake in our community where people believe that we've cut all GT. We haven't, we haven't at all. We still have fourth grade GT math, we still have fifth grade GT math. We still have curriculum extension units, a third, a fourth, and fifth. And we're changing to a talent development model in second and first, what we have in first in kindergarten. None of that rigor is going away. And I want to address the previous question, and that is, at the state level funding went back to the sea. I am currently the legislative chair for the Maryland Association of Educations. I have testified at the state repeatedly this year, and do it again and again, bringing forward requests for appropriate funding. Thank you.
Should you have to make redistricting decisions, how would you rate the three factors identified in Policy 6010, which are facility utilization, community stability, and demographic characteristics of the student population? Which one is the most important and which one is the least important?
I think the most important thing when it comes to redistricting, what can we afford? We're getting rid of teachers, because we can't afford to keep them. I'm the only person on here who has a child in elementary, a child in middle school, and two in high school. The academics have to break. I have friends who have kids who can't read, I have friends who have kids who can't spell. I have friends who have kids in mental health crisis. We are not out of COVID yet. And that's why the county should be sending us more money. And at the state level, they should be giving us more money annually. When it comes to redistricting, we couldn't afford what they decided to do. And we're paying the price on the other end of the report. You got a budget that went from $31 million in '21 for transportation to $67 million next year they were proposing? And our number of students haven't increased? You have parents driving 40 minutes to their high school. You have kids walking because they changed the boundaries. Let's fudge these lines and set door to door. The kids are walking from one zone of their apartment complex to the edge of the school. And they're walking for a mile and a half, because the numbers are getting fudged. And we have kids who are being attacked on the way. It's not right. It's not right what's happening to our kids, it's not right what's happening to our budget. What we need to focus on is what we can afford. And when we do the redistricting, we need to realize that when you move a child farther from their community, you're forgetting the community. Those kids need more support in their community, and that's what our budget and our finances should be focused on. These kids shouldn't be spending long hours on a bus to get to their school and then back. These parents shouldn't be spending long hours to drive their kids back, because that's not right. It's not building a community, and you're actually disadvantaging the very kids that you care about most. Thank you.
Okay. How do you see the board's role in ensuring that the school system complies with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, commonly known as IDEA?
Thank you. We have failed to promote vulnerable students. Our special education students are not the priority they need to be. And they are in our general education classes. So when we fail the student, we fail the teachers, and we fail our classmates. We're on a probationary list at the state level for our special education. And that's avoidable, preventable, it's unacceptable. It doesn't belong in accounting with our resources. So I hope the new school superintendent and the acting superintendent has really stepped up to do a nice job. I hope they prioritize the skill set that we need to get that condition changed. And as a board member, I would insist that the new superintendent makes that a priority. And I also want to circle back to a common thread with all these questions, whether it's our special education kids, the conditions of our schools, the physical condition of our schools, and the budget itself. I'm a safety candidate. I have been working for public health and safety since I started my career at FDA. I expanded it to firearm safety when I became a gun violence survivor. And when I thought about the safety of exchange students that I had welcomed into my home, I pivoted to expand it even more for the safety of our kids. Kids who don't feel safe aren't going to learn. Kids who aren't mentally healthy can't learn. So we have a mental health crisis as well. So we need to recognize the common thread of safety that runs through all of these issues that affect our kids, and we need to make it a priority. There's no excuse not to do that in our county. Thank you.
What is your plan for making sure the county has an adequate number of schools?
Well, I personally can't do that. Is that a?
Oh, that better.
I personally can't do that. I try very hard, but I think that I agree very much with the idea of using public-private partnerships. One night, I was the deputy secretary of transportation. We used a public-private partnership to build the new Woodrow Wilson Bridge. And without it, we would not have done so. It provides some real benefits, and everything that the board has heard about it and that I reviewed, it does what we need to do. It enables you to build more faster. Prince George's County built six schools in three years. And we have, what, 50% of our schools are over 50 years old? We need more schools, we need to refit, to fix our schools. And that is a very good way to get it done without impacting the budget about which we all are so concerned. Just a couple of things on the budget that we talked about. It's been very interesting for me, because I've been watching the school meetings for the last eight or nine months. And it really broadened my knowledge of the budget. Typically, we think we don't want to spend too much money, and the county executive has said, well, your, the number of students is going down. Well, that may be true, but that's not what is impacting our budget. Every year, there are more and more and more things that we have to do. And whether to the state or the feds or something that we ourselves decide to do, it is increasing the cost of doing what we are doing every year. And I think that's something that I hope we can get across to all of the taxpayers in our county so they understand, we say we need more money, it's not, it's a justified request. Yeah, I wanted to address the IEPs, but I'll wait till another time to go into that.
All right, back for round three, starting again on the end. Sort of another budget. What would be your plan for dealing with the millions in deferred maintenance in our schools?
Well, I think those should not defer anymore. And then, of course, that we need to show the urgency of those maintenance, because the student, the safety issue in the school, if the water pipe burst at any time, do you feel safer? And if they, if they're still in the school, if there are mold and termites and mice running around, that is a bigger health issue. And so those things, I don't think it can defer anymore. And we need to find the money and to advocate the county and the state to provide money to do this. I think it's one of the things, we still have those many trailers in our school system. I would challenge those officials, if, why don't they do the work in the trailer? Why do they let the student to study in the trailer? That is unfair. If the student is our future, why do they put them on the risk? So those cannot defer. We need to strongly advocate the county and the state to fund our school budget, capital budget. And the one of the things is that currently, when developers to build a house, the school impact is not fully addressed. Each student can cost $100,000 for the school capacity. Our developers haven't paid this yet. We should ask them to fully prepare the school impact so that we will not have a capital budget, those deferred maintenance issues in the future.
All right. Given a rocky start to the school year, do you think that bus transportation continues to be an issue? And do you think students should have shorter distances to walk to school?
Absolutely. Students should have shorter distances to walk to school. Before I address the main question, part of the reasons why our transportation budget is so high is because our school districts are gerrymandered. And we got to stop the gerrymandering. There are multiple reasons why we do the gerrymandering, but we should not do that. If all the schools are performing at the same high level, and they are not, and we should make sure that all schools are performing at the same high level, I should just... I should just take like a circle, draw a circle around each school, and that's where the students should go to. Why are we gerrymandering? That's the point. That's actually one of the things I would like to vote to air and say, like, at least come up with a plan. So that being said, going back to the school transportation issue, that was a bad thing. I thought, I think the intent behind that was noble. The implementation that was the problem. I mean, we have like 700 different transportation contractors. And it's very, very hungry. And the school system should not get into the transportation thing. Their job is to teach the students. So I think it was a good thing to start moving to a big contractor. But it was the implementation that was the problem. And somebody just said, the contract wasn't vetted or properly. There were no penalties in the contract. And there was nothing holding the contractor to the, their feet to the fire saying, hey, you got to do this. So that was where we failed. I don't think we should have kids walk more than they are already walking. And I do know that we changed the criteria on calculating distance from border to border rather than from door to door, you know, property line to property line. And that could easily have, like, a half a mile, a quarter mile, depending on where you stay in this school you go. So those are some of the things which I don't think did right.
All right. What do you think are the main issues affecting teacher recruitment and retention? And how would you address them?
Yeah, so it's very hard to get people to be willing to come and teach today. It's not valued the way that it should be. During the pandemic early days, people were like, oh my gosh, how do we do what you, we wish the teachers were still, you know, it wasn't pandemic because we can't teach our own kids. And then it kind of turned. And it hasn't quite turned back. And the challenges that teachers are facing are just, they worked hard before and they've grown even harder. There's so many issues with just mental health, with being able for kids to get along with one another and to be together again. Even now, there's still challenges. Even if you go out on the street and watch people driving, people drive kind of crazy these days. Everybody's a little angry. So I think some of the things that we need to do here in our county is we need to make sure that we are getting prepared to pay our teachers the amounts that Blueprint requires and above that because every other district in our state is going to have to hit those minimums. And if you're in another jurisdiction where it's a lot cheaper to live, you know, why come here then? I did also want to touch on a few things. One of the issues facing District 1, there is no high school in District 1, not a one. So drawing a circle wouldn't help us there. And I also want to say with redistricting, capacity would always be my number one. The other things I think need to be equally weighted so we can make sure that we are creating diverse and wonderful schools as well and not concentrating poverty. And I'm really happy, even though my daughter is now at, after her closest high school, but it is not overcrowded school. My oldest was here at this school at the 140% period. And it was not a good experience.
Thank you. Hey. What can the Board of Education do to improve special education besides providing additional funding?
Everything is money. So I'm trying to think about how to do this because even someone said this before, that most of our students with disabilities are in general education classrooms. And their teachers need to be able to be trained properly to address the needs of those students. We, as a board, have put in a lot more mental health supports. Again, that's money, right? So we're trying to make sure that our kids feel safe and feel heard, that their behaviors are an expression of their needs. But all of it is funding. That it really requires us to put the dollars there. There are students that need one-on-one close supervision, so, you know, within hands reach of another, of a child. And a lot of our general educators are finding out that they are the one-on-one, right? So it takes, it takes funding to be able to bring in more support teams who truly need that support. And short of funding, it's training just to make sure that everybody that's surrounding the young person understands the needs that they may exhibit and they have. So that's really where, that's really where we need to be. And I'm going to take a page when everyone else is looking and double back to questions that were answered. So one of the things I kind of want to touch about for teacher recruitment and retention is that, yes, we are definitely going to have to pay teachers more, but also there's been a need professionalization of the teaching field, right? Like, it just doesn't feel like a profession anymore. And that's what we're hearing from a lot of teachers. And so one of the things, the blueprint is about professionalizing teaching again. So the teachers that are strong and good are incentivized to stay in the schools, not just become teachers, run schools or work in central office, that they're able to stay in the teaching field and mentor the next group of teachers, of people that want to become teachers. So I think that's really one of the things that I'm looking forward to in terms of Blueprint is really getting back to the professionalization for our students.
Thank you. When the school board makes decisions, they will possibly consider how PTAs will respond to those decisions. For example, if the board cuts a program, the board may think that PTAs will step in to fund the program. What role should PTAs play in financially supporting the school system? And how will you ensure that the board will not rely on PTAs to pay for things the school system should be providing?
I think PTAs should not be involved in funding the core programs of the school system. And yeah, I think I would just close at that. I want to answer, I want to go back to a question about the P3s. And just want to, just want to emphasize. When I was in business school, one of my professors said, there's no free lunch. The idea that we're going to create this extra money by using P3s is not realistic. It's not a panacea to create extra funding to build schools. The county spends, I've tracked legislation at the county council since 2019 and look at hundreds of bills. The county spends at least $100 million in appropriating into developers every year. This is why we have problems. If we focus on ensuring that the county is spending, is making wise zoning and land use decisions, I think we will have money to fund the programs that we need. These consternations about making PTAs fund programs or getting teachers to, you know, having teachers purchasing school supplies, why are we, why are we dealing with that? This is one of the wealthiest counties in the country. We should not have these problems. And so I think if we focus on that, if we make sure that our county is making wise land use and zoning decisions, we can have money to address all these problems.
All right. What does it mean to you to, quote, "lead with equity"? What voices do you feel have been most ignored when it comes to school system policies and practices?
To lead with equity, equity is a lens. It is how we view things. It doesn't mean equal. It means, it's a justice lens where you say, what barriers can we remove so that every student can access their education? Every student. So our biggest equity program is special education because not everyone needs those supports. So I 100% believe that that kind of equity, to give a student what they need to access their education and succeed, is the most critical thing. For some of our students, that may be breakfast and lunch. Because I know I can't learn and I can't function well when I'm hungry. And so different students need different things. And it is important that we understand that it's a lens. It's not a program. It's not one and done. It's making sure that we have the systems in place to support our students. For some students, that's going to be GT. For other students, it's not. And so using that lens is really critical. And then I'm going to pivot and go to deferred maintenance when we talk about it. One of the things that I think most people don't understand is that we are leaving money on the table at the state for capital facilities every year, period. We would need $90 million from our local jurisdiction in order to get the matching funds from the state. The Spending Affordability Committee Commission under Dr. Ball said no more than $73 million in bonds. So there, and that's for the entire county. So every year right now, if we are not at that $90 million level, we are leaving money on the table. Thank you.
All right. More and more elementary school children are requiring mental health intervention to access their school's curriculum. HCPSS schools are not prepared. The cuts to staffing positions and the increased class sizes will only exacerbate this looming crisis. What is your plan to address this matter as the cuts are adding to the already overburdened schools?
You must have been reading my notes because I had that on there. But I do want to speak to the equity question. I think in the discussion of the decisions on equity in the budget, I think the board members forgot the struggle in the student set exists in every school. And when you look at an IEP, and I've had multiple kids with IEPs, it's called the Individual Education Plan. That's how we should be looking at our schools. And that's how we should be looking at our kids. And not picking winners and losers. But moving back to, I've actually changed, I filed five, actually seven, seven state complaints. I think it was more. And successfully won five of them against schools in this state in 2016 to expand and accept my son's double vision because they said double vision was not a vision impairment and hadn't done it. And then in four months, I worked with the U.S. Department of Education after Obama sent me a letter and connected me with the administration. And I changed it nationwide to expand and make sure that kids like my son, who struggled to see clearly with non-acuity vision impairments, got their accommodations. I have children with IEPs. I just had an issue this week. I had to go get them. We need to work with the behavior health coordinators that were established, both at the local level, at the state, at the health department, and at the schools to connect parents to resources to ensure students are receiving all the support they need, not just to the schools, to help them meet their own peoples. I struggled to find someone for my daughter. And it was the school that gave me the most advice ever, that helped her get through COVID. We also need to apply for grants with the state community consortium to develop more school and partnership behavior health programs. It's there. Let's just ask for it. Thank you.
All right. Fighting amongst students has become rampant at every level of our school system. How would you address the violence in our schools? Do you support having SROs at all of our middle and high schools?
Violence, harassment, hate speech has no place in our schools. No place. We have procedures in place for when that's reported, but parents and students don't always know that that reporting system exists. We can, teachers can take action when there's a pattern. But if one teacher with 32 students sees one thing and the next teacher in the next class, an hour later, sees one instance, you can't demonstrate a pattern. So we need to make sure students and teachers and parents know about this system. We need to be proactive in reaching out to them so that they don't have to come to a board meeting and take time off work to find out about it. We need to push this information to parents. And that also leads me to an equity issue that we've been talking about in this round of questions. We can't treat each student the same and each school the same. Each school has different needs. We have three two-star schools in Howard County. They need things that are very different to help children feel safe, whether it's from bullying, raid on, unlighted pathways, buses that can't get them this long time, whatever makes them feel not valued and not safe at school, whether it's the fear of violence from another student or just watching to see how we demonstrate our values for them. If students don't feel safe, they can't learn. So we need to reach out to parents. We can't just put schools in a box and find out what they're, what we think they need. We need to get up behind, get out from behind the desks at the board meeting, go to schools and ask them what they need to feel safe, to feel valued in school. Thank you.
All right. With the removal of many programs in HCPSS due to budgetary reasons, what can we do as a school system to differentiate ourselves from our neighboring counties so that we can continue to provide excellent education opportunities to our students?
I actually don't think we are in competition so much with other counties. I think we need to provide the programs that our students need. I think one of the questions that came up in the budget this time is the need to eliminate a number of special programs, electives, where kids love to take them. Because if you eliminate those, it eliminates, I guess it was, did you put a 20-student maximum or limit? You have to have 20 students sign up for one of these courses in order to have the course maintained. And I know there are ways that you can contemplate looking at doing it virtually. But there is going to be a decrease in the number of electives because it used to be just 15 students. And again, it's another money saving effort. I would like to go back to the subject of special education, partly because when I wrote an article in one of my newsletters about just generically budget things and pointed out that there are things that we are paying for now that we haven't done before, not that it was wrong, but just that that's what's creating the budgetary process. I had an email from somebody who was very upset with me and said that I wasn't supportive of special ed. And I did what I always do, and I wrote her back. And I said, that's not my intended goal. We started a correspondence and ended up with a one-hour Zoom meeting where I learned a great deal from her. And I decided I need to know more. And I decided I'll go research it, which I love doing. And I did it, and I researched, researched, and researched. And I just, it was overwhelming. One of the questions you asked last time was about the program. The program for special ed is so long and so paper intensive. It seems like it's doing the same thing in two or three different ways that we need to see if we can cut back on the paperwork and do things more effectively. We need to have an entire overhaul of the system with all of the stakeholders involved. All right, thank you so much.
We are now going to move on to some questions we have from the audience. We'll start, Mr. Gav. During your research for becoming an HCPSS board member, what did you find to be the most pressing issue for special education?
Was it the most depressing issue is that nowadays, we still have some of the students that have to attend a special education out of the system, which is, that is very costly. And I think we should internalize those programs so that we, all the students with special education need can be done in our school system. A couple of years ago, I know a friend of mine whose son needs a special education, but then he couldn't get... but then he couldn't get here in Howard County, so he opted for a private program. But then, in the end, he was very frustrated that he has to move to Montgomery County because we cannot provide adequate special education to his son. So that's, that's the thing, that's the thing that's very important. We need to, to provide inside the county, and then to also to reduce our cost. So at this time, I also want to mention other things previously asked once about equity. I think if we just use forty percent farm student as a cutoff, then that's not fair because how about those schools with thirty-nine percent of farm student? Do you think it's equity for them? I don't think so. So that is an arbitrary cutoff to do that. And of course, if the superintendent already proposed a Plan B or Plan C to include those, why do you cut it from it? Because if you can just ask county to provide it, why do you short-hand it for us?
Okay, Superintendent, you're up. What are your thoughts on how to improve food quality in the cafeterias?
That's a tough one. That's actually something we, not just for the schools, it's for all of us. We all need to start eating healthy. I mean, we all eat a lot of processed food, and that cuts off our lifespan. Again, kids learn from us, so if you don't eat healthy food, kids aren't going to use healthy food. So we need to cut down on healthy food in the school system. But more than that, something which I've been advocating is more of occasional training to the kids. So we need to teach our kids how to cook. We need to teach our kids how to use their hands to do some basic carpentry, do the oil change. And I want to cut out the definition of farm from free and reduced to farm means people who can grow their own food. So that kind of makes, gives a lot of confidence. My kids have graduated and they moved out of the house, and the most common reason they call me back is how do I cook? Again, they want to eat healthy, and that's perfectly fine. It's just that we never created an environment for them to, you know, cook on their own. And we did kind of lead by example too. So that's something we need to do, is make sure we teach our kids to eat healthy. I would change that, I would cut out the colas from the school system, that's high sugar. I would cut out all the super saturated food from the school system. But again, I know that that was something that the school system had tried at one time, and there was a lot of backlash from the parents. So we have to change that, that needs to change in the culture. So, you know, that's why I had to say that. But I do want to thank each and every one of you for coming in today. There's a lot of good stuff you could have done on a Friday afternoon, but you chose to be here because you care about your kids, and we all are here because we care about our kids. And we have a lot of great candidates here today, we have a lot of smart people. And I thank everybody for running, because what we are doing is very, very important.
All right, thank you. Currently, our capital budget is prioritized by four areas. Those are capacity needs, maintenance needs, state identified needs, and age-based facility needs. The data is provided by the state and HCPSS. Do you think that decision should be data-driven or based on district needs?
All right, thanks. Yeah, I think we definitely need to use data to make these decisions. And I would really like to see a long-range plan that actually is a long-range plan. Every single year, capacity new capital for the plan, and every single year is very different. And oftentimes, it seems like there's some push behind the scenes for particular schools or particular projects to move forward, and people don't understand why. And people come out and protest, and schools that really need the help can't rally up, people come out and protest. I mean, how many people show up in shirts isn't the way we should decide. We should be deciding based on the actual facts. What is the building's status? What is the cost to replace systems, what's the cost to renovate, what's the cost to rebuild? And also, making sure that if we make these decisions, if we're able to add capacity, let's add capacity. Especially if it's in a place where we need capacity. So, get back to a few other questions. So I also wanted to comment on special education. Burner approved bill, that was something that I was in favor of, that the state tried to put forward. Parents shouldn't have to be the ones that are proving that their students are not getting a free and appropriate public education. The burn should be to prove that the school system is giving that. I also wanted to mention that I think even when we can't always give more money to our teachers, I think what we can do is give them our listening ears and actually listen to what they have to say. They might have ideas that will help us, and that, give them more autonomy over their work and take some of the burns off of them in their day-to-day. I work for not very much money at Little Preschool, but I feel very valued by my new teachers, and they always take what I have to say into consideration. Thanks.
Okay. Where would you like to see the school system in four years? In other words, what are your priorities if you win this term?
Gosh, I thought the first question was about my hopes and dreams for the school system, and then the reality question. So honestly, so my hopes and dreams for our school system is that every, every child receives the education that they deserve. That's where I hope to see us going. And I think one of the things that I've done on the board and continue to do is really to make sure that we have accountability in our school system. So one of the things the parents are most passionate about is actually what is the education students are receiving, right? Can they, can they read, can they do math? And one of the things I was proud of doing this, this term, in my first term, is putting forward a superintendent evaluation that is focused on really the academic achievement and the well-being of the students. And so you'll start to see that come out in our quarterly reports. We just had one on math, which question was about academic scaling. We are testing number one in the state for math. I'm not sure where that, where that comment came from. And so you'll start to see more data about how our students are doing in math, in reading, if they're going track in ninth grade. So really the things that you do here for that are fundamental to your child, being on, being able to get a high paying and well-paying job in the future, or technology that's in place. So that's really where I want to see us going in the next four years, is having an actual plan, a path that we are able to get students academically where they need to be from the time they are getting our hands in kindergarten before pre-K until they graduate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you think that the student member of the board should be able to vote?
I believe the question more specifically is whether or not they should vote on the budget. Because I think they vote on other aspects of the decision. So, yeah, I think they should vote. I think, you know, it's, they are, they represent their students. One of the most insightful deliberations during the school bus issues came from the student member. And therefore, you know, I think they will have, they have, they can provide some input to those decisions. I also wanted to touch on a couple of other questions that were asked earlier in terms of the, specifically to the special education. We learned recently that the state, instead of shifting the burner approval from the parent to the school, has provided some allocation of funds to allow, to allow the parents to still go through the process rather than having the school system, you know, rather than shift the burner approval. Unfortunately, that's, you know, to me, it sort of reminded me of the, you know, if you can't afford an attorney, it will be provided to you, which, you know, is not a, it's not an effective way of helping someone navigate this, you know, the, these complicated, you know, IP programs. Fortunately, I think, you know, we should continue pushing for making sure that the burner approval is shifted to the school system so that parents can have, are able to successfully meet their children's needs.
Thank you. What aspects, if any, would you like to change on how the Board of Ed conducts its business?
Well, I think we started to do that this spring, or winter, when we introduced participatory budgeting. And having four sessions of in-person testimony, so that's about twelve hours, we received thousands of pieces of testimony. And that was one of the things that I was really trying to bring forward this year by changing the structure of how we do the budget. So that we have not only informed community, but informed decision makers. So that's one of the things that I'd like to continue to bring forward and to change. Actually, could you restate, could you state the question again? I want to make sure I answer.
What aspects, if any, would you like to change on how the Board of Ed conducts its business?
Okay. Additionally, I would like to have more accountability. And when we talk about accountability, sometimes it can, it can be really dry and tedious. But it's important, and so we need to have status-side portions of our meetings where we are making sure that the programs that we fund are working. And if they're not working, do it differently. And so I think having more open discussions is a critical path to doing business differently. And it kind of tears into the four-year plan. What would I like to do in the next four years is, one, I think we need to fix transportation. We need to reduce the walk zone, period. And have the walk zones go back to what they were, or even smaller. Because we do know that kids who aren't getting to school, they aren't learning, can't learn if they're not there. And I think that some of the advice we got from the consultant was pretty important. And one of the things that I, as board chair, have done is change some of the accountability structures and processes for improving contracts. So any contract that comes before the board at fifty thousand or above has to be signed by the legal entity of the board chair. And I have sent contract after contract back. If it didn't contain the proper names of who is superintendent, it went back. If it didn't contain a section on not to exceed this amount, it went back. If it didn't contain liquidated damages or other warranties and guarantees, it went back. Wherever it was appropriate, putting those kind of accountability measures in place is really critical to us doing business differently.
Thank you. All right. This question states, "I have multiple teacher friends who are considering quitting due to very low pay and distress this poses on people's personal and family lives." And this is more particularly aimed for teachers who are tenured and older in the system, not teachers who would be affected by the minimum standards of the blueprint. Why is this happening in one of the richest counties in the US? And what would you do as a board member to improve the lot of teachers in our county?
I didn't expect to get such a good question, because I'm a former teacher, and I've had to support my family on just my income and the high cost of living, I taught in California. And I know what it's like to struggle to know that you can't make ends meet, even though you have a degree and that you teach. My father-in-law just died a few weeks ago. He taught middle school math for fifty years, and he raised thirteen kids combined. And he didn't just work those hours. He was a coach, he worked summer school, he was a board of ed. He worked really hard to try to afford, to put food on the table for all of those kids. We are facing a financial cliff next year. All of our starting spec salary, we've got to talk about the budget, because we could talk about all this other stuff, and if you don't have the money, it doesn't matter. Next year, we are having to require to pay teachers sixty thousand dollars starting. And then all nationally board certified teachers will have ten thousand dollars extra on top of that. And they're coming, they've done the work to make themselves better as teachers. And then anyone who works in a type one school as defined by the blueprint will get an additional seven thousand dollars. How are we going to make that, these teachers who have worked hard? And we, and the blueprint, I remember hearing it, forgot about the upper level, the top salary teachers. They're not going to stay here if they can't afford it. They're going to go to another county, another state, where they can afford to put food on the table like my father-in-law did. We have to get a strategic, long-term, multi-year budget plan with state, local, and the community to get our fiscal house in order, or it doesn't matter what we say, because they will do, because they can afford to teach it. Thank you.
When it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, what has HCPSS and the Board of Education have done right, and what has it done wrong?
Well, I'll start with what they've done wrong. Trying to oppose our idea of equity in a school and a community that we haven't asked them what they need isn't equitable. We need to come out from behind our tables and podiums and visit the schools. There's a community advisory council, there's this wonderful PTA advisory council, the information is out there. And I'll also circle back to the student member of the board. There was an effort a couple of years ago to take away their voting rights, and boy, you've never seen a bunch of inspiring, smart young people who have been that student member come to Annapolis and say why their votes are important, why their input is so important. We need to find more ways to invite input from the communities. We need to go there ourselves, because we can't wait for them to come to us. That's not equitable, by definition, it's not equitable. Because the people who can't come to us, the people who are working two jobs, the single-parent families, the kids with students who have special needs, where we can't leave them at home for two months, none of those people can participate easily in the process. So we need to ask for people what they need. I'm not going to mansplain to somebody what they need, or board-splain. All right? I'm not going to board-splain to these communities what they need, I'm going to go and find out and ask them. I do want to go back, circle back to our teacher recruitment issue, and also our supplies for these teachers. Every student has special ed students in the classroom, and they don't have access to their, to their plan while they're teaching them. The plan is locked up in another room on the other side of the school, so they have to go get it. And, or they have to have a perfect memory and remember it all. Or they come back at the end of class and look and say, "Oh, I forgot that." That's frustrating for us. Teachers were taking away their power to make change. And one of the reasons I got the Apple ballot, which I'm so proud of, is because I'm committed to making sure the teachers have the equipment they need to meet the needs of their students, whether they're special needs or not. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope this is short, because we've got a lot of things I want to talk about.
All right. This is our last question of the forum. So, do you support the change to later start times? Why or why not, and do you think any additional changes need to be made?
Absolutely. I know there's a
I know it was a disaster when they first started, but I will tell you, I was very impressed with Dr. Martorana, who took the bull by the horns, changed the start times again to make the buses work. But anybody who's had a teenager knows that trying to get them in school at seven is not good. 20 minutes more makes a difference and I think that we have gotten to where we need to be. Couple of other things I wanted to talk about. I'd like to comment to the board on things that I have been very impressed with, and there was talk about accountability. And all, remember Malala again, particularly Member Watts and Member Skates, who's now running for reelection. They talked about accountability in terms that I haven't heard, and we'll call them public employees in a long time. It was Member Skates who said, "You come to us every year with asking for more money for this program. We need to know what is this program put up to achieve? When you come back, you need to tell us has it achieved it? And if it hasn't, we're not going to fund it again." And that's the kind of accountability I think is necessary, it's fair, it's reasonable, and it would be both good for budget and good for teaching kids, because if the program's not working, it is not really doing its job. Talk about PTA funding. This is interesting. One of the things that the board votes on every meeting, and I think it's in the, it's in the non-restraint vote, is something called donations. And I was looking at those and every month they list what donations have come in, primarily from PTAs and others. It could be like-in-one-kind material, it could be money. And what I found fascinating is, boy, I think maybe it's the Western Howard County that has, gives the most money. It may. I haven't been able to figure out how to add everything up. But there are other schools that you wouldn't necessarily think that give tremendous amounts to their schools. And I think that's good. I think it's wonderful for parents who are involved, and parents should be involved, giving an opportunity to their, oop, I'm out of time, to their schools. All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's do one grand round of applause for all of our participants for taking part in the event. We really appreciate you doing this. Thank you. Do you want to give a closing?
Okay. All right. All right. What do you think? One minute?
Five more.
All right. We'll do one minute closing. All right. Let me turn down.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for spending your precious Saturday afternoon time, not a Friday, okay? Saturday afternoon time to hear, to hear us. And that shows you're very concerned with, about the education and about the school system in this county. I sincerely appreciate your effort and I would like to continue to interact with you, to hear back from you. And as my friend always mentioned that, I'm a very good listener and I'm an action taker and a problem solver. So please come to me when you have any question and I will need your support throughout this campaign. And right now it's just March and we need to go all the way through December, November. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today. Appreciate your time. One thing that's clear is that our standards are falling in Howard County. And compared to the rest of the world, we are falling behind. We're still ahead, but we're still, but we're falling behind and we got to change, right? We can't do Band-Aid anymore. We've been trying to fly Band-Aids for too long and that's why we are in a firefighting mode. The issues with you here today are the same issues which were there 10 years ago. So we have to think drastically differently and we need to have systemic change, like bottom-up budgeting. We need to have multi-year budgeting. We need to have a much more objective way of analyzing the priorities of our big construction. We got to make sure that we are able to bring all the schools to the same high level of standards. And we got to look at where we're spending our money on accountability. I don't see a reason why we should spend $142 million in renovating Oakville High School when we need a high school right in average and it's a much cheaper to build a high school there. So those are some of the things, and I don't want to talk about this in more detail, but I'll be available for the round.
And I do just want to give a quick reminder that all the questions are going to be sent to the candidates to provide a written response as well. So if there's something you didn't hear or a candidate you didn't hear from, we'll have an opportunity in writing later.
I thought no more homework.
All right. Thank you, Jim, for being here. Thank you, PTAC, for putting this together on my grid running District 1. And I, I hope that I have convinced you of my experience, my knowledge of the school system. You can't fake a decade and a half of PTA, PTSA leadership and service and dedication to our community and advocacy. I also want to mention that the teachers have put their support in me. I'm endorsed by HCA, very proud of that. And I'm going to work for every single student in our county to make sure that they can get the best education they can and I'm going to do it with everyone. I'm a consensus builder, I'm a problem solver, and I, as I was told at preschool just the other day, "Wow, you've got a lot of patience." And I think we'd be done on the board. So I hope you will vote for me if you're in District 1, if you are not in District 1 but want to get involved, please reach out to my website, magricksforboe.com.
I'd also want to say thank you for coming out. I know this is a lot and I appreciate you coming. I want to say that you are, are going to have your nominees. You are going to get a poll that go back to your community that say the things that you saw and that you heard and the, and where the advocate, there's not a lot of people that are paying attention to Board of Education. This race, I think, is one of the most important things at the national level. What's happening in your local level is really what impacts your community the most. So I am Antonio Watts and I just want to, I'm ready to, that I am certainly on the board because I understand the needs of our community and how the board impacts those needs. You'll hear a lot of candidates start to talk about things that are completely outside of the purview of Board of Ed, and I want to make sure that you understand that the board is focused on superintendent evaluation, policies, and budget. And that's the lane that we live in. So if you hear things that are outside of those things, just know that maybe that candidate does not understand the full scope of what the board is talking for. Thank you.
I want to echo my thanks as well. Thank you all for being here. Typically, in Howard County, education and the school system is an afterthought. When the general plan was being developed, it was an afterthought. When the county executive recently announced the Gateway Review Master Plan, education advocates were not included. And so we need true advocates for the education system. The next general plan, if implemented according to plan, will add half a billion dollars in new debt to the county. And so our, our issues will get worse unless we change direction. And so that's why I'm running for Board of Education. I hope my county support. Thank you all for being here.
I've been on the board for five and a half years. I would like to have your support in District 4. And this is a hard job. I spend between 40 and 70 hours a week on this job. I have quit my other employment to do this job full-time because I believe in public service. And I believe that this job is that public servant where we are taking your interests and your thoughts and sharing them and directing the superintendent accordingly. So in conclusion, I have the time to do the work, the time to do the homework, and time to do the hard work that this job requires. So I ask for your support on May 14. Thank you.
I'm running for school board in District 5 because I saw something broken and I wanted to fix it. And I have a long nine-year, nine-year history of fixing broken things successfully. The school board needs to make decisions we can afford. As much as some may want it, we can't afford the new school times. We need to stagger them. Redistricting, the waivers, the current Zoom contract that is up for negotiation, the idle buses, a top-heavy administration, because it means we can't afford to ensure our students have the buses they need to get to school. Offer competitive pay scale to recruit and retain highly qualified staff. Reduce class size. Keep critical and innovative programs. The added school construction, the list goes on. If we keep cutting from our schools, the very things that attract people to come to Howard County and pay the taxes and do, they do, we will continue to have to cut. And that's why I am pushing for a strategic, multi-year budget plan with stakeholders. It must be served to get us out of this. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for coming. I'm Andrew Shandley on the Teachers' Choice in District 5. I've dedicated my career and my life to public safety, whether it's safety in the food we eat and send to our schools, sorry about that, or it's not as healthy as it used to be, the drugs we take, the transportation that takes us there. I've dedicated my life to public health and safety. I've expanded on dedication for gun safety, which has affected our kids. My high school was the site of a terrible shooting this semester. My high school. It's also the genesis for the anti-bullying law in Maryland. So safety for our students goes way beyond gun safety. We talked about some of those today. The state of our facilities, the state of our students, their mental health crisis. Kids who aren't safe can't learn and kids who aren't well can't learn well. I am their advocate. I ask for your vote on May 14. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Will, for coming in. Thank you so much for not only having, but for sending us the video of the board from last year. Fascinating. It was really, really well done. My two daughters, one of them is a teacher, they look at me and they say, "Mom, why are you doing this?" And they've always supported me in my political aspirations, but I'm going to tell you, what Jen Mallon said is exactly right. I've learned in watching and listening. This job is 10 times harder than being a delegate. Delegates are paid $55,000, $6,000 a year. School members are paid $16,000. This is not a job you take for money, glory, or anything, but because you care about kids and you care about education. I hope I get the opportunity to do that. I ask for your vote. And I finally will say, my website, trekkettelman.com, is not technically political. You will find on there all the education articles that I wrote in the 100 newsletters I wrote during my tenure as a delegate plus information on me, like I said, more than you ever wanted to know. Thank you. Okay. Now, I guess we're ready then. Thank you all again.
And if anyone wants to play, Howard County's seventh play, Auditorium, Tucker for the last name.